Thank you very much. We will look for that. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 10th meeting of the Scarborough Zoning Board of Appeals. We'll call the meeting to order. And we'll start off as always with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And this is, as we all know, it's a public meeting, it is recorded. And members of the public have the right to be heard. However, we do limit public comment to specific periods during the individual appeals. And once the public comment is closed, the discussion is solely for the members of the board. And if we're asking any questions, we have a panel of some other members. With that, we'll get right into things, but if, Doreen, you could call the roll.
Peter Freylinger?
Here.
Joe Doertie?
Here.
Richard Silkman?
Here.
David Bork?
Here.
And Michael Campbell?
Here.
So, Doreen, could you let us know just how the voting will apply for today? Because we have a couple of, I think, we, um, Michael is going to be a vote, a full voting member.
And Joe.
And Joe is a full voting member. And just for the record, I was not here at the last meeting, so I will not be, or I'll be, I'm standing on the votes for the, for the approval of the last meeting's items, so. And that's what we start, then, um, let's get into things. The first thing is the approval of the minutes.
Slow moved.
So, Richard, thank you.
Second.
Thank you, David. Any discussion? Seeing none, again, I will abstain, having not been here. All those in favor say please raise. That is unanimous vote, thank you. We will then go into our prior decisions, decision, or the written decision for appeal 2783, Practical Variance Appeal on 260 Route 1. Again, I was not here, but did the members of the, of the board have a chance to read the final findings?
I move we adopt the decision.
Great. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Joe. And a show of hands? That is unanimous, thank you. The next one is a, is an extension, actually. That was the only written appeal. The next one is a, is an extension, actually. That was the only written appeal we had for the last, last week? So I'm on the agenda, but, okay. We have a request for a prior approved variance, number 2770, a variance approval for Kerry and Alexander Martin. They're looking for a six-month extension. I think there was a note here and, in a letter, a notarized letter outlining their conditions. Were there any concerns or questions?
No.
Okay. Do I see a motion to approve?
Still moved.
Thank you, Richard. Second? Thank you, David. With that, any other comments? Could we call a roll for the approval, Andre?
Yes.
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 And I can vote on this one. This is, yeah, this is, so I vote yes as well. That passes unanimously. Um, thank you very much. I'm not sure if they're here tonight or not, but that was pretty straightforward. We have the next item, an item tabled from the July 9th meeting, appeal 2776, a limited reduction of yard size appeal by Custom Concepts. And there's our Custom Concepts friends right there. Now, we've seen this already. This is coming back after having been tabled. There were a number of comments at the prior meeting regarding some additional or some enhancements to the application. So maybe if we could focus on the changes or the additional elements that you've added versus the discussion item that we had in July, that would probably be helpful for us.
Will do.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Richmond, Custom Concepts. I'm here on behalf of Mike and Chris DeShaw of Five Bliss Street. As you mentioned, who were here a few meetings back and decided to table. So I'll try to be very brief with this. So from my notes, when discussing the five criteria, we discuss the following. First one, of course, is easy. It was erected prior to 1991. Number two, this sort of led to a request for us on our side to show other examples of similar conditions in the district. With this, we provided six different properties that are close to this property that have similar upper decks and exterior stairs leaning down from them. Two of them actually have spiral staircases similar to the one that we are requesting, coming down from those upper decks. Excuse me. Reading through an analysis submitted by a neighbor, which actually appreciated that, there's 43 properties according to that with exterior decks and nine of those with exterior stairs. And as mentioned, we show pictures of two with spiral stairs, just like we're requesting. You know, so for rough numbers, if there's 10 properties in the area with somewhat similar stairs coming down, all located in a district that's rather small, that seems to me that it's reasonable for the Shaw family to be able to enjoy their property in a similar manner. Please keep in mind that this criteria says other similar properties, not all other properties. Another submission points out that these similar properties have more space between their stairs and abutting properties than the Shaw family would have with theirs if this was approved. Please understand, if the Shaw property offered just a little more space for the stair, I wouldn't be here. We cannot control the fact that the existing rental unit next door is pretty close to the Shaw's property line. As they explained, that rental unit next door has been this way for about 100 years. It's simply a unique existing condition that we can't control or change. Number, item number three, as discussed in the first meeting, we did look at many other alternatives before making this request, including different straight stairs, bent stairs, all sorts of different locations. But if you look at the photos, or if you drove by this home, it's really simple and really attractive. And the Shaw family keeps it in tip-top condition. So placing it anywhere else in the front of the home would simply take away from the aesthetics of it. And we would be broken to do that. Placing any type of stair off the right side of the garage or the backside of the house, it just simply doesn't achieve the goal of getting direct access to the ground from the deck. So we purposely placed it where we show it. It's in the corner of the house. It's kind of in a little nook, if you've walked the property, little nook, a little L shape in the, in the house, knowing that it will add aesthetically, because this is a beachfront community. And that's what we kind of see in beachfront homes. Criteria number four. So as discussed prior, this relief is only for approximately 26 square feet of space. To be honest, it's probably about the size of your table that you're sitting at, maybe a little bit bigger. The stair would be tucked into the corner of the home, like I mentioned, and should not have any negative effect on the uses of other properties in the neighborhood as criteria number four explains. Anybody using this stair will have, stair would have a clear path directly to the street, similar to any other path in the neighborhood. It would, this stair would not allow the home to have any more occupants than it does. And this stair would not change the use of that house at all. Last criteria, number five, that's an easy one. Know that they have not commenced construction. So those were my quick responses in addition to the, you know, to the submission material that we presented for the meeting. Thank you.
I'll open it up to, before we open it up for public comment, there will be public comment. I'd like to just open it up now for questions right now. Yes, David?
Yes. There was an allegation made that the property lines aren't exactly accurate. And there may be some slight variances in there. And I know that, you know, one of the, one of the lines, not the one on the front of the house, but on the side, you know, it's, it's within inches now. Okay? Could you get into a little bit more about the, you know, the, you know, the exact property lines and, you know, the validation of the, what you submitted as far as that is concerned?
I can do, but just from a high level, because I'm not a surveyor. I did speak directly with Steve Martin. Steve is the surveyor. I've used him in this area for, boy, almost 20 years. Steve has been a licensed surveyor in the state of Maine for, since 1982. And he has focused on southern Maine. So he's done a ton in Old Orchard. And he's probably done 20, 25 projects just for me on the Pine Point, Old Orchard Beach stretch. So I called him specifically when we received that letter and said, you know, hey, Steve, can we just, let's double check, right? There's, there's, my neck is on the line here. And he did. And he called me a day or two later. He said, Mike, I'm, I am rock solid with my findings. I said, thank you very much. So.
Additional question?
Pardon?
Additional question? The deck, instead of having it located where it is, could it possibly be on the other side of the property? As you're facing the, the front of the house, couldn't it be on the right side? Instead of the left, which is a lot more open space there, and it's not abutting a neighbor where, you know, the stairwell is only five feet away from their house.
So probably aesthetically and structurally, yes, but we would not have the building coverage to allow for it. Right now, the, the, the upper deck, which is already submitted for permitting, covers an existing building, so we're not increasing lot coverage with that.
Okay.
But if we were to extend off the side, that would be increased.
Please leave to my next question. It's been, evidence has been submitted that the lot coverage is currently is approximately 26%, which is in excess of the maximum of 25%. While it's not part of what we can look at, you know, for limited reduction in yard size, it is definitely an important consideration going forward, you know, as far as any construction that would take place. Could you please explain to us what you're going to do specifically in order to reduce the coverage to within 25% of the lot coverage?
Absolutely. I actually just spoke to Brian about this the other day. So in, in my field, usually from my position, we are grandfathered to what's covered. When we approach, if it's, if it's already over, we're grandfathered to that amount. So what we've done on similar projects is if, if we're asking for something over here, we have to reduce that lot coverage somewhere else. And we do that mathematically. If anything, we're on the safe side. So that's something that I usually work directly with the code office on. And once they're comfortable with it, then we finish up the plans and submit for permit. So it's, it's a give and take.
Understand. I have one other question, which escapes right now, so I'll come back to it.
I'll pass the time to Richard, yes.
When we last visited this two or three months ago, one of my expectations was that the parties would confer during this intervening time to see if there was anything that could be done with the development to make it a little bit more amenable to the abutters. Can you describe to me what kinds of conversations you've had? And whether or not there were any options that were discussed as to make this more acceptable to the abutters?
So I did not have a conversation with them. I didn't feel that was directed towards me. That was directed towards the owners. And, and just so you know, right after that last meeting, two months ago, whatever it was, I had another presentation after that meeting, which I went through. And even after that, when I left, they, they talked out in the parking lot at length. So whether or not that satisfies that, I don't know, but they did, they did speak to it. We, we did follow through with this diagram, which is in your submission as well, to help, to help that based on the last conversation, to make sure we're not directing people towards the neighbors.
Is the owner here? Could he speak to the conversations that have taken place and whether or not there's been any, any movement in either direction?
Evening. Yes, I did.
And just for the record, your, your name's?
I'm sorry, Michael Shaw, Five Bliss Street, Scarborough, Maine.
Thank you.
Yes, he did.
Can you summarize what those conversations led to, or was, or what was discussed, or?
Discuss was that was directly following this meeting, so everything was fresh. And we had a discussion about that. And obviously, they, the neighbors that were present at the last meeting had a desire for us not to have a staircase in that 26 square feet. And obviously, I prefer to, you know, have the 26 square foot variance, which is the whole point of the meeting, to enable us to hopefully have that staircase for us to enjoy the property as much as we, we can, like neighboring properties.
So there was no, just to be clear for the record, there is no change in your proposal as a result of those discussions?
Yeah, sorry. I want to say change, but alter. There's some, some suggestions that, I don't know if they call them suggestions. There were some comments that I heard that the committee and other opinions of the neighboring, neighboring property, as far as the egress of leaving the, leaving the staircase. And the concern was that it was going to go onto their property. So I believe, I believe, sorry, did you?
It's right here.
Okay, sorry, Adam. Yeah. Do you mind?
So before they came here, the team come this way, there's some existing seagrass that's here. It's actually very nice. There goes with the community area well. And the Pine Point area, there's existing about a pretty close, actually a 25, 20 square, 25 square foot SD, sorry, electrical box that actually supplies electricity for the forefront houses, us being one of them. And so we have that, and we added potentially additional landscape in there. So we would add additional, if necessary, a couple of pavers just to make it easier to go to the street and not go into the neighboring property. So we did address that. Answer your question.
Yep. Thank you. David?
Yes, I remember, suddenly remembered the question I wanted to ask. Okay. You know, back to, back to the presenter. Now, as you're well aware, egress is not required by the town of Scarborough. There's a bit of confusion as to whether this stairwell would be used for egress only or access as well as egress. Could you clarify?
Oh, I, I obviously it would be used for both. Yeah.
Well, I'm not sure that's acceptable.
Okay.
Okay. Would you be willing to make that egress only, but posting a sign at the bottom saying that's, it's emergency, emergency exit only?
I would have to, please do.
Mr. Chair, we, we can't do that, David.
Okay.
There's no way, there's no way to do that.
I withdraw my question.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Joe? Just a couple of questions, maybe points of clarification for me. Going back and reading through the application, the general description generally described the project and why the reduction is needed. The first sentence says, "The Shaw family would like to have an additional source of egress from the second floor of the home." But in the presentation, both in the last meeting and this meeting, there were specifically comments about egress from the deck, which is, I understand it is not existing. Neither of the decks that are proposed, right, neither are existing.
Correct.
So which is it?
Well, so to be honest, it started as egress, right? We, we would like these upper decks, which makes sense. It's a beachfront community. And then the discussion came into, well, it would be very nice for us to be able to get out of this portion of the house going down. I'll be honest, you know, other than a commercial building, there's no way to really sort of direct egress or, or ingress, right? You, you, you can't do that even with signage, I guess. People read signs or not read signs. You know, so, yeah, it was developed initially because we'd like to get down. In an emergency, we want to get down. But of course, people could use it to get back upstairs. Go both ways. So, yeah.
So, so the application as it stands, based on your explanation, started with an egress, which I agree. I mean, it's a rental home. Makes sense. Developed into an egress coming off a deck that you feel, and I can understand why you feel that way, is a good solution. Yeah. But the application just asked for an egress for safety reasons, as you just said. Given all of the concerns from neighbors that have been expressed, if the objective ultimately is to have an egress from the second floor of the house, why can't it go somewhere else?
Well, anything off the back of the house would, you know, we don't have any space on the back of the house. It would require zoning, you know, a zoning variance as well. Off the right-hand side of the house, you'd have to go on the other side of the garage, I guess. It, it, it wouldn't make sense. I, I will say this as well. Yes, this started with egress out. Keep in mind, if you're coming off the beach and you want to enter this house, unlikely you're going to go up those stairs because it leads, it leads directly to one bedroom and one bedroom only. And the door is right there. The main door to the house is right there. So I think the, the idea of people floating in from the beach and racing up this thing, if you've walked the property, I doubt it's going to happen because, again, it's, it's a private bedroom. Go right around the corner. There's the main door that goes into the entry, the mudroom, the kitchen. So.
Michael? I have a question, particularly for the, for, Michael, I'll ask you. If the, if, if an approval of the variance were to stipulate a requirement that the landscaping that you described on the diagram there be put in place prior to the occupancy certificate being issued, so that we have addressed at least the, the tra, the foot traffic concerns and the directory of foot traffic, would that be amenable?
Hundred percent, yes.
With that, anything else from you guys? Anything else from, oh, sorry, David?
Do you know whether or not this is a, a commercial property? Meaning it's a rental, primarily a rental property year round, I assume? And if so, is it organized as a corporation, if of some sort, a legal entity?
Do you, please do.
Sure.
So yes, it is, yeah, the answer is yes, but it's rented not too often. It's only rented in the 2025 season for just three weeks. So it is a, what some would call a higher-end rental property. It's a seven-day, God bless you, a seven-day rental minimum. And in 2025, we only had three weeks rented. So it is a very small rental season. And other than that, it is for the majority of the summer, just my, me, my wife and our dog. And we have family that comes, comes up as well to enjoy the property with us.
Okay. So you're, just directly abutting to you, there's a, I'd call it more of an inn. And I forget the name of the property, but I'm sure there's representatives here that I will speak. But, yeah, they're, they're also seasonal, as are most of the other properties around there. And I imagine most of them are set up as businesses, you know, which would be smart, you know, in order to protect yourself and to make it legal and official. So, so you, you are a functioning business.
Correct. And the, the, the property is set up on, I don't know if this answers your question or not, sorry. It's set up as an, a, a. Uh, it's set up as an, uh, uh, the property selling on is a, is owned by a trust and set up as an LLC. I don't, that answers your question.
That's why I want to get on record. So you are an LLC.
Yes, and part of that is, and why safety is very important to us. And ingress and egress is important to us.
So I go back to my issue and Brian, please forgive me for saying this, but egress is really the, the issue here. Access has no place here, is my opinion. And I'm not sure if we, how we would regulate that in any way, or we could put a stipulation on this. But, you know, this is a business and we need it treated as such.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board before we open something for the public? Uh, then, thanks, Mike. Appreciate that. Um, and. I think there are members of the public who, who wish to speak. Um, we'll take the first gentleman or raise his hand. Thank you very much. And, uh, as we come up here, if you just, uh, give your name, um, your address here in town, um, or the address of the property that you're representing. And because this, I think this should be okay, we'll give you five minutes. Um, and, and then we'll take it from there, if that's okay?
Great, thank you. Good evening. Um, first of all, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Long.
Name and address, please.
Yes. Eric Kennedy, uh, my family runs the Sea Ward on the Oceanfront Inn at Seven Bliss Street. Right adjacent to Five Bliss Street. Uh, first, I'd just like to thank the board and Mr. Longstaff and the town of Scarborough staff for your service. And I appreciate your attention to this matter. Like to clear a couple of things right up off the bat. Um, we never had a conversation with Mike about this project in the parking lot. We talked about other things. He talked about his business, talked about selling his business, retiring, but we never talked about this project or our concerns with the project. At the July meeting, um, when the board was, uh, requested by the applicant to table their final decision on the appeal. The board evaluated five criteria that the, the appeal must meet. Um, and the board voted on those five criteria and voted that. They did not meet two of the criteria, which is criteria two and criteria four. We still don't think they meet criteria two or criteria four, and I'm just going to jump right to. Why we don't think they meet those criteria as well as criteria three, which was considered. Uh, but the board voted that they, they did meet criteria three, but I'd like to introduce some new information about criteria three. And I, I'd also like to, um, before I get into the criteria, just a second. Uh, discuss the properties that they brought up that are similar to, uh, their property. Most of the properties they brought up are actually on East Grand Avenue. Which is a completely different, uh, neighborhood atmosphere. Than the side streets that Bliss Street is like, that go down to the beach. The side streets are much quieter. Um, you don't have the traffic noise going back and forth. Yes, uh, several homes on Eastern Grand Avenue do have second door, second floor decks. But they probably are not as attuned to what's going on on those decks because of all the other noise that are going, that's going on. The side streets are much quieter. Um, so getting to criteria two. We surveyed more than two hundred homes in the zoning district. And found that seventy percent of the homes do not have second story decks. Only about two and a half percent, which is five homes, um. Have second story decks with external staircases. About twenty percent of the homes have second story decks with no staircases. So many more secondary decks with no, no external access. I think it's reasonable conclusion that many more than two and a half percent of the homeowners in the district. Use and enjoy their homes perfectly well. Without second story decks accessible by means of an external staircase. Furthermore, based on the distances between those homes. Or between those homes with, uh, decks, second story decks that have external staircases. Very few, if any, appear to be located. Close enough to have required a variance. Uh, from, from the required property line setback distances as, as in this case. Clearly, an external staircase providing access to a second story deck is not reasonably necessary. For the vast majority of homeowners in the zoning district to use and enjoy their property. Criteria three. That this, uh, this is due to the physical features of the lot and/or the location of existing structures on the lot. It would not be practical to construct the proposed expansion, enlargement, or new structure. In conformance with the currently applicable yard size requirements. I encourage board members to reconsider this criteria. In light of information that was not presented either by the applicant or opponents. Uh, at the zoning board meeting in July. In their application, the primary reason for the staircase. Is to provide additional means of egress from the second story. If you look at the drawing that shows the lots on Bliss Street. And the next street over, which is Dover Street. The Shots not only own Lot Twelve associated with their Five Bliss Street property. But they also own Lot Seventeen at Ten Dover Street, which shares that back property line. Why couldn't they build the staircase for egress on that backside of the house? Where it would only impact the property line that they share with their other property. The other option would be to put the access. Near their garage, which could either go into the garage or out over the garage. That, that's another option that may not even need a variance. So I think there are options if they look a little closer. To put a, a stairway for, uh, egress from the second story.
And that, that's been five minutes. Keep going on the last one, though. I don't want to take, take.
Well, uh, I don't want to, I don't want to overuse my time, so I'm gonna stop here. And my sister will, my sister Lisa will, uh, address the fourth criteria.
Okay, terrific. Questions of the board. Okay, terrific. Thank you very much. And thank you for assisting us on the time management.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa Kennedy. I live at Seven Bradford Lane in Scarborough and I'm Eric's sister, so clearly. We run the Sea Ward together on, at Seven Bliss Street. Um, and criteria four, I know we've talked about this. At quite a bit of length, um, in July. Um, but, you know, I just want to reiterate that the impacts and the effects. From, you know, having a two-story spiral staircase. Yes, if they put grass in front of it, that will cover maybe the first, I don't know, five feet. But this is a second story, you know, this is going to the second story. And going up to that second story, they're going to be able to look right into the windows of our cottage. And we just feel that that's going to, you know, cut down on the privacy that our guests have. Um, and it, it is going to create noise. I don't think grass is going to keep much noise from coming. Coming through the, you know, going up the steps. I don't know what material they're planning to make the steps out of. If it's metal that clanks, you know. Um, but our guests are sensitive to noises. They come for relaxation. They come to. You know, enjoy, listen to the waves and, and listen to the birds. They don't come to listen to neighbors. So the noise and then the lighting is another concern. Um, if they've got stairs, I'm assuming code would require lighting on them. I, I don't know that for sure, but. Um, that is another concern that the lights will bother our guests at night. Um. And, uh, oh, yeah, and then the noise as well. Um, so I think that covers the most of it. I mean, we had a lot more in our comments, but, and I don't want to take up more time. So.
No, and, and again, I appreciate you with detailed written comments. Those are always great for us because we could consider them and, at, at, not at leisure, but with a bit more time. And it helps us manage the evening. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
You could ask.
Before you head to back.
Question. Did you participate in that survey of the houses, the two hundred houses?
Um, I, I helped with the graph. I made the graph, but I did not survey. It was my sister-in-law and my, my brother and my nephew, actually, that's sitting over there that. That did a lot of that survey.
Can I just ask, Paul, when you said the two hundred, what did you define as the neighborhood? Do you, do you know where those houses were?
Yeah, it went all the way up to, what, Avenue Five on, on the point. Um. But it, it, it's on, it wasn't on the marsh side of Jones Creek Drive, right? It was. Yeah.
Yeah, I would say that would be.
I had meant to ask you, and then I've just slipped my mind when you were, so.
You gave it a chance, Richard.
Oh, you did. I'm not complaining.
So yes, the, the two hundred homes was actually throughout the entire zoning district, whi- which goes from the Old Orchard Beach line. All the way over to Bailey's Lobster Pound, basically, if you know where that is. Um, we don't consider that whole area as one neighborhood. You know, there, there are different, different pockets of different types of neighborhoods, I think, within that whole zone. Um, but that's, that's the answer to your question.
Anything else? Uh, David?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, uh, and this is something you could probably help on. You know. Uh, uh, item four on here deals with the impact on the neighborhood and uses in neighborhood. Uh, and again, since this is a rental property business. Uh, I think it's important to note that, um, and you probably know more about this than I. That, uh, the town of Scarborough is currently considering ordinance to register and regulate rental properties in the town. Which would include the supervision of as well as the, you know, the licensing. And the compliance with the good neighbor ordinance. Am I correct?
It is, although to be clear, let me make two comments on that. First off, um, it's solely for, um. I, I think what's colloquially only known as Airbnb or VRBO rentals. So they're not for rentals such as the inn that the, um, the, the folks who are proposing would run. That's subject to, um, uh, specific code for, um, essentially for operating it in. Um, and I'm not sure how it would apply to, um. Let me get the name right. Uh, Bliss Street, Bliss Street Beach House LLC. Um, which would be the company that, that would be, um, uh, operating here. Um, the other thing I'll mark on that one is the town has elected not to pursue that for the time being. So while it has considered it, um, the ordinance committee has decided to defer it with no, um, timing for reconsideration or for re-uptake. So.
And may I add to that, then? We're not here to develop ordinance.
Correct, that is.
That's not part of the scope of what we're here for.
Or to anticipate, as it may.
Because they may or may not do this in the future. So I think that's important to note because that's definitely an important part of number four here.
Oh, we do? Okay. Oh, that's first. Okay. Um. Got it. Uh, thank you very much. Um, uh, do we have anyone else in the audience or? Okay. And we will take the person who's online, please hold on and wait for that, but we'll take, I'd like to do the folks in person first and then we'll, we'll hit the person online. Thank you. Same thing, name, address, and you have five minutes.
I'm John Chandler. I'm on one fifty William Street, Auburn, Maine, but I'm also co-owner of the Sea Ward. That's an S corporation. Been in business since nineteen twenty and it's still there. Uh, I was hoping I didn't have to say anything tonight, but I guess I really have to. I have to listen to what was said. I was very surprised to see a fire escape on there as listing as being a deck. I helped design that doggone thing over fifty-five years ago, and all it does is a very small landing on the top. And no one goes up and down on a regular basis. The last person to go up and down that, or even just up it. Was me last year when I put the Thompson water seal on. Otherwise than that, there's no traffic on it. So I would hardly call that an, it's a egress. Only. It's there for fire protection, uh, it's required. We meet the code, but we do not go up and down it. We just go, well, we'd go down if we had to. Uh, but it's not used. It's not used for, uh, access in the deck. Anybody stands on that deck and that door goes open, they're going to go flying because it, that's not a deck, it's a landing. So that's one I would not call a deck. Uh, I was concerned also, just the applicant is worried about the aesthetics of that staircase. He doesn't seem to be worried about the aesthetics to us. By shifting it over to our side, that doesn't make us feel very good. Uh, if he wants to put it on, he can put it on anywhere he wants in the back of the house for his true egress. And you can go, perfect place to do it. Uh, in terms of the conversation in the parking lot, we talked a little bit. He was explaining to me that all the systems he had were LLCs because he has, what, four now, I guess it is. Uh, and I was already curious about it because we had talked about, we were an S corporation. I was trying to figure out, well, what do we want to do if we want to do an LLC? But I didn't get too far. The only other thing I talked about is I had the study of the Camp Ellis problem with the sand going away. Uh, that was put out by University of Maine quite a while ago, and I promised I'd get a copy to him. I, I still have it. I just haven't got to you yet. Uh, the fact he stopped taking rentals this year, I'm not sure what caused that. I didn't see too much activity on either the rental properties on Bliss Street. So it may have just been the fact that there weren't many customers, as we are running the same problem. And I can tell you right now, I'm going to go off in a little war story, is we got a Canadian problem. Sixty percent of our business is Canadian, and you know where they are. They're up there. And Old Orchard's the same way. Uh, I'll take any questions. Or the other thing I mentioned to him. What I knew about the property lines for my aunt. Be- before she passed, is the property line a little closer to that electric box than what? The diagram was showing, and I mentioned to him, looking at it, I'm not so sure that they get the property line right. And I'd mentioned that. That's the only other conversation we had. I'll take any questions.
Seeing none? Um, got it. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Anyone else in the audience who should just, uh, come on up? Okay, then we'll, uh, take, uh, the caller online.
Hi, uh, my name is Sue Hallroyd, and, um, I'm directly across the street at Six Bliss. We have a summer cottage there. Tried to go up on weekends and a few times, uh, longer than that during the summer. I think I have an issue with, um, the, where the spiral staircase is going to be. It's right in front of a set, set of windows that is an undocumented sixth bedroom for that house. It's a, um. Bunk room, so to speak, and there are two sets of bunks and, uh, I think another twin bed down there. And I'm just wondering. The casement windows, they have to be pushed out if they ever had to get out of there. Would they be able to get out of there? With where that spiral staircase is going?
Gotcha.
Yes.
Do you want to, uh, Mike, you're already responding?
Uh, that's a great question, and the answer would be yes. We, we could still get out of the basement area if needed.
Yes.
And, and just so you know, there's an exterior door. That goes out of the basement directly out to the backyard.
Okay.
Yes, I know there's an exterior door, but what if there's a fire in the rest of the basement?
Uh, Brian, correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, we're, we're required by code to have, have one good egress out of there. One goes up through the house, one goes directly outside, so we're, we do satisfy the code there.
Yeah, I mean, we could play what if all day long. There's a lot of what ifs, but yeah. One egress out of every basement is required.
Yep. Anything else from a caller?
Uh, no, I think I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, thanks for dialing in. We appreciate it. Okay, if there is, uh, nothing further from the public. Then I will close public comment. And we'll enter into our sta- our, uh, uh, board discussion. Um, should we go through the findings? And we're, we're, we're going to focus just on, as I appreciate the appellant doing on, uh, two, three, and four. Um, we're not going to cover one and five, um, today. Uh, that, that, that has been dealt with adequately. So, um, uh, hold on a second here, let me. Also, I wish to thank the members of the public for helping manage time. This could have gone very long, and I appreciate that. So, uh, David, why don't you take us through number two? And give our thoughts.
Thank you. Uh. The request of reduction is reasonably necessary to prevent the owner to occupy. Uh, the occupation, excuse me, of the property. the occupants, excuse me, of the property to use and enjoy the property as essentially the same manner as other similar properties utilized in the zoning district. I still have concerns. I'm, I'm, you know, I know that there are other properties in the general area that have stair walls going, you know, from an upper deck, you know, down to the ground level. I believe there were five of them in total, you know, in this large stretch of land, 200 homes, I believe, in the survey that was submitted to us as in evidence. So, and not only that, but the, the applicant, you know, did a good job showing, showing us pictures of that. So, but I think if we look carefully at that and look at the distance between those homes and the budding homes, in most cases, they were greater than 35 feet. And that definitely has an impact on the usability in regards to the impact on the budding neighbors. So I'm really concerned about this criterion as, as not being met.
Any other thoughts? I've got a couple.
Yeah, so I, I just want to clarify something, Brian. I, I'm trying to remember back two months ago when we were last year talking through this, but if I remember correctly, the decks can be done, that's a separate, that's a separate thing. And if I remember right, the property line discussion came up. And again, that's something that we really can't deal with here tonight. It's not within our scope. It, it gets dealt with during the permitting process and all of the review for that. Is that correct?
Well, I mean, they, they've, they've submitted a survey. If you're talking about the dispute about where the line is, we don't have expertise to refute it. It's the surveyor's license that he puts on the plan. And then if there is another survey that comes out with a different result, they go to court and a judge decides that's not within the town's authority to do that, or the board's authority to do that, or my authority to do that.
So that's not a zoning board issue. That's a.
But, but it's outside of our, it's outside of our scope.
It's outside of our scope. All we can do is require a licensed surveyor to perform that survey in which they, they brought that to us. So they get that requirement.
And what is within scope is, is really the egress that they're asking for. The variance on, right? I mean, that's, that's, that's basically what we're talking about.
The five criteria for that, for that appeal.
And so, and I wanted, and, and just to be clear on this and clear for the members of the public, what's before us is a limited reduction of yard size. The fact that it's for an egress or, you know, to, to store Tonka toys essentially is not, I don't want to say it's not relevant because it is relevant to whether it's similar to other properties in the neighborhood, et cetera. But that's where its relevance comes in. It's not because we're looking for a, a, an appeal for an egress.
Understood. Thank you for the clarification. Appreciate it. So on that basis, when I look at point two, criteria two, and, and also we've heard testimony that it, having an egress from that future deck is not a requirement, or for that matter, an egress from the second floor of the house anywhere is not a requirement to code. It, it seems to me that, at least from my position, that not granting the variance doesn't have any impact on the owner's ability, the appellant's ability to continue to use the house as it is, and, and that it's not reasonably necessary for them to continue to use the property as it's currently used. And in spite of the fact that there are some homes in the district, we've heard 200 homes, however many there are, I guess we could debate that. Certainly, I think we'd all agree it's a relatively small percentage that have these types of stairs and decks relative to the, the total number. So, yeah, that's kind of where I am on number two. If, given all of that, it's, it's, it's hard to see where where this has been met from my perspective.
Richard, you look at your decision.
Yes, I, I agree. I don't think that the stairway is reasonably necessary to allow them to enjoy access to a second floor deck. The fact that there are a few homes in the vicinity that have that, when you actually look at those situations, they really are very different. And in terms of allowing a variance to occur, none of those, I, I suspect none of those required a variance. In this instance, allowing a variance to occur would only be allowed if or reasonably necessary to enjoy the property. And I don't think that that staircase is, is necessary. There are a lot of second floor decks without that, and we heard from the public that, you know, in their survey, they identified quite a few decks that did not have access to the ground. And I think this is certainly a deck that could be enjoyed considerably without access to the ground in that direction. The applicant wants to put access in somewhere else. That's their business. But I think in, in order to give a variance, we would have to find reasonably necessary, and I don't think they've met that standard.
Michael, anything from you?
I mean, my only rebuttal would be that we've already identified that it's an LLC. The business of having the property and elevating the property is for the sole purpose of making the property more profitable. Whereas I do understand that it might not be an ideal situation for the people around that. However, this scenario is in the importance of making margin profit. So it needs to be elevated. And having a staircase that comes directly as an entryway into a bathroom, to me, that's not an avoid. It's not, but it makes no sense. And I mean, I understand that the, the goal is to kind of, uh, not change everything, but to kind of add value to the property. In the spirit of that, I would have to disagree.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have a question for Brian. Okay, since we, Brian, since we've established that this is a business, it's an LLC. Okay, does that change anything in terms of required egress? It does not. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, everyone. As we come to vote on these issues in, in a bit, I'll remind everyone that we can have reasonable disagreements. We did not require unanimous vote one way or the others. We should feel comfortable on that one. Where I come on this one is really from the evidence provided by the, by the appellant. It, it, it really doesn't appear that this would be in the, this staircase is in the same manner or in the same, would, would allows the utilization of property in the same manner as other homes in the district. The, the photograph shown, again, all with one exception, land of the stairway into either sort of directed towards the public street or clearly wouldn't require a variance to get the staircase in the first place. The one where it does kind of unload to the side, there is substantial protection in the form of a fence and an arbor vitae thing that shields it from the, from the neighbor's property, substantially shields it and provides privacy for the neighbor's property. So this would, this strikes me as being a unique appeal for, for, for the area. And we're not supposed to grant unique variances. We're supposed to, to, the, the, if, if the town wishes to encourage the type of density that this implies, the town can update the zoning regs to allow for that in general. But I don't think we're here to, to provide a unique variance that others in the neighborhood have not felt the need to apply for or pursue in what is already a fairly dense neighborhood. So, and I hear Michael's objection. I think he's, he's got a, he's, he's got a point. But again, do other businesses, and I think we have a business right next to them, require the same or are only able to enjoy or support the profitability of their businesses with a similar structure? The answer is pretty clearly no. In, in the, in the neighborhood, other businesses don't need this. So that's kind of where I'm coming out on this. So. Any further comment before we take this to a vote? Okay. The finding is the requested reduction is reasonably necessary to permit the owner or occupant of the property to use enjoy the property in essentially the same manner as other similar properties are utilized in the zoning district. Doreen, if you would call her.
Peter Freylinger?
No.
Joe Doherty?
No.
Richard Silkman?
No.
David Bork?
No.
And Michael Campbell?
I would say yes. Great. We'll move on to number three. Richard?
Due to the physical features of the lot and the location of existing structures on the lot, it would not be practical to construct the proposed expansion, enlargement, or new structure in conformance with the currently applicable yard size requirements. This is a, is a tricky one. We really haven't looked at any of the alternatives that might be available. There's been some discussion about alternatives providing egress, certainly. But there have been, and there may be alternatives that would provide for egress, but not functional ingress. You know, in the case of an emergency, there may be ways of structuring exits off of this that would be different than the spiral staircase proposed, but that really wasn't a consideration. So it's been, it's, it's hard to determine whether there are options. To the extent that, you know, the stairway could go on the other side of the deck, you know, it's aesthetically, it may not be as nice. I'm not sure whether it would run into problems with lot size coverage issues and whether that would create problems. But again, we don't know those questions. So my sense is that in this one, we really haven't investigated it to the fullest extent that we probably should have. And so therefore I would be inclined to find that we don't meet this criteria. That there may be alternatives to provide certainly egress, and there may be alternatives to provide more access to the deck that just haven't been examined.
Other comments or any? David?
Yes, I would add that we've had public testimony to show that this criterion has not been met.
Anything, Michael? Gotcha. We've come back to the word egress again, and again, egress is not required for this deck. And it, it really isn't. It's, it's a nice to have, and, and nice to haves are allowed for development, by the way. That's, that's, I'm not saying that, that's not the case. It's just, the egress is not really the issue. I think we have heard, though, that it is practical to construct a staircase elsewhere. But to Richard's point, we haven't examined the full range of other issues that might evolve from that, but, but it would be practical. And and again, I fall back on the evidence of, for the neighborhood. Others in the neighborhood have, have decided in the vast majority of cases that they could either create a conforming staircase, which might be possible in this property, or a staircase just isn't necessary for a second floor deck. So the practicality of construction is one thing. The practicality of that construction and whether it's required for this particular renovation to add the deck is, is also at play here, and I think it hasn't been met. I agree. Okay, let's call the roll.
Your Freylinger?
No.
Joe Doherty?
No.
Richard Silkman?
No.
David Bork?
No.
And Michael Campbell?
I guess no. No.
Yeah, there's only yes or no. Okay, number four, the impacts and effects of the enlargement, expansion, or new building or structure on existing uses of the neighborhood will not be substantially different from or greater than the impacts of building or structure which conforms to the yard size requirement. Joe?
When you look at it from the perspective of impacts and effects, and certainly we've heard some testimony from neighbors as to what they believe the impacts and effects would be. It, it, it seems, it seems to me that while we don't know how this stairway would be used, it is awfully close to the property next door and to that, that small, you know, what, whatever you would call it, the, the small structure. And, and that it has a likelihood, in my opinion, to substantially impact in effect the people staying there. That said, it's not lost on me that with or without the stairway, if the deck is built, the same impacts or effects are probably there anyway. But that's outside of our scope. So from my perspective, this criteria is not met.
Richard?
This is an odd criteria. I mean, it's, it's a little bit tricky. If you read the actual language, it says that, and I'm going to substitute in for the spiral staircases. The spiral staircases will, or staircase will not be substantially different from or greater than the impacts or effects of a building with a spiral staircase that conforms to the yard size requirement. And if this spiral staircase were 15 feet away, and as it conformed, the impact would be significantly different from where it is. And so I think the, you know, the fact that what we're asking for here is the, is the variance creates the impact. It's actually the variance that creates the impact. Without the variance, the spiral staircase would not have an impact, and I think it would be an acceptable property. So I think in, in this case, it really isn't met. But as they say, it's an odd criteria to, you know, to, to structure around this particular example.
David?
Yes, I'd like to go on the record as the fact that if the spiral, yes, excuse me, the spiral staircase were approved, that would put the spiral case only five feet away from the budding property, the house, on the budding property, which is very, very close. So it will have, it will definitely have undue impact.
Mike? Michael, I'm, I'm, I'm going to follow exactly with you. We're going to go, but I will say I agree with Richard. This is a tricky one, and the wording of it is, is deserving of attention as we go to vote. So, Doreen, if you would, and not me first. Oh, I'll go first.
Joe Campbell?
I would say yes.
Peter Freylinger?
Think yes on this one.
Joe Doherty?
No.
Richard Silkman?
No.
David Bork?
No.
Okay, then, again, we have prior voted and found findings number one and number five to be, to be in, in compliance. So we will not redo that one. Are there any other further comments before we, I'll ask for motion? Seeing none, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Do you have a second? A second. Thank you. Doreen, could you call the call for a approval of appeal number 2776, limited reduction of yard side appeal for Five Bliss Street in Scarborough?
Michael Campbell?
Yes.
Peter Freylinger?
No.
Joe Doherty?
No.
Richard Silkman?
No.
David Bork?
No.
The appeal is denied. Thank you very much for your time and attention, everyone, and thank you for especially over two meetings. Thank you very much. And for the caller who called in, thank you for your patience and forbearance with technology as well. Okay.
Thank you.
And we will move on to 2785, a, another limited reduction of yard size variance for Bradford Leonard at Ford Jamestown Circle. Is Bradford here?
I'm Will Lewis.
You're Will, okay.
Representing the applicant Bradford. Leonard at Ford Jamestown Circle, and I apologize, I did not bring a full set of plans to show you a big picture. Is anyone, everyone familiar? There it is. Okay, great. Would you like me to go through the A, Bs, and Cs, and Ds?
Yes, you can, and we're going to have you to read it into the record to the, the, the items that are required for the variance once we get to that point. So it's a little bit of a formal process.
Yeah.
We're, bear with us. Good?
No worries. So you want me to start with that?
Yeah, give it, give us.
And whatnot, yeah.
Give us the overview, give us the concept.
So we designed a full wraparound porch for the property at Ford Jamestown Circle. We feel that the ask in this case, I understand it can't be over 10 feet toward the front of the property. It's, it maxes out at four feet and then tails off, as you can see, to nothing over about 12 feet for a total variance of 48 square feet. The owners feel like this is a, an ask that's worth because it keeps a continuous. The owners feel like this is a, an ask that's worth, um, because it keeps a continuous seven foot six line off the front of the house. It's aesthetically pleasing, um, and they think it's going to add a lot to the home and the enjoyment and use of the property. Let's see. Built, right? 1984 to 1986, I couldn't quite determine, but that's what I found in the records. And that, no sugarcoating, they're just, they want a reduction to, uh, really enjoy the use of the property and the design they've chose. And, yeah, when talking with the architect, it was designed with a setback in mind to stay within that variance limit. And so the impacts and effects of enlargement, this is a, number four is interestingly worded, I feel like. Greater than the impacts and effects of a building or structure is conforms to the yard size requirement. So I didn't do a canvas of the neighborhood. I did drive around, I did see some other covered porches. I don't know if they got variances. I'm not sure. I didn't get out my 100-yard foot tape and run around the neighborhood being like, ha, you! But, um, basically, we think the slight push into the setback zone, um, will not be substantially different than a porch that conforms to this yard size requirement. The ask is that it makes it aesthetically pleasing and, uh, one line down the property line, um, for building purposes as well. And, uh,
Any questions at a general level at this point? Not seeing any? Okay, um. Is there any public comment? A couple of comments that we didn't get, uh, email or anything like that? Okay, public comments closed. Um, I'll ask you now just to read it in, and this is where the formal part of it comes in.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, go to the, um, if you go to the, uh, uh, part C of the application.
Okay.
Um, the existing buildings or structures for the lot for which the limited reduction of yard size residential appeal is requested were erected prior to July 3, 1991, or the lot, like, lot is vacant, not before a lot of work.
That is yes, right?
Yes, and you submit, just, yeah, built between 1984 and 1986, you said.
Yes.
The requested reduction is reasonably necessary to permit the owner or occupant of the property to use and enjoy the property in essentially the same manner as other similar properties are utilized in the zoning district.
Yeah, we feel like that's a yes as well. Um, like I said, I only did a quick drive of the neighborhood, and we found other covered porches in the area.
Due to the physical features of the lot and/or the location of existing structures on the lot, it would not be practical to construct the proposed expansion, enlargement, or new structure in conformance with the currently applicable yard size requirements.
It was designed with a setback in mind, yes.
Yep. Also, a wraparound porch is by definition a wraparound porch. It's not like you can throw the porch into the backyard.
Yeah.
Uh, the impacts and effects of the enlargement, expansion, or new building or structure on the existing uses in the neighborhood will not be substantially different from or greater than the impacts and effects of a building or structure which conforms to the yard size requirement.
I think this is the yes as well.
And the applicant has not commenced construction?
No.
And we can confirm that? See, no, thank you. Okay, terrific, um. Richard?
Looking at the diagram up there, my understanding is that you are requesting the variance for that, we'll call it a triangle?
For better word, yeah, it's basically a triangle with an ellipse in it, right?
Did you look at what a design would look like if you didn't need that triangle? I mean, how much, how much room would there be? Is it?
Yeah.
That aesthetically different, is it?
Where it tees, where it comes into the building is the main breezeway entrance, and what you can't see in this is, I have a 3D drawing if we can enlarge it, but the main entrance is a peaked roof, uh, coming up at the, um, porch right there. That is the entrance they use day in and day out instead of going through the garage. So that was specifically designed to hip out to the corner. It's a design feature, yes, but no, we did not look at, um, reducing that size. That helps, does that help your question? You, you said you, you were wondering if we could, we looked at reducing it to stay?
Yes.
We did. Uh, honestly, they felt that a seven foot six reach off the building, the whole length was aesthetically pleasing and best use for the space. I mean, it does allow for a very nice entrance, um, and walkway off the driveway on that side of it. This is their preferred design. Yep.
So you're like, what? Richard, or, I'm sorry.
Uh, I would just simply say that we, we are permitted to allow four-foot variance, you know, by the definition of limited reduction yard size.
Yep.
So, you know, this is kind of irrelevant in terms of, you know, how much, you know, but we can definitely go up, I believe it's five. On this, yeah, so, yeah, okay, so it falls within the scope of what we can do. Always a 10.
I was confused on this one. Where is the front?
Yeah.
It's at the, the north, the top.
Talking about, okay. That's, that's what I thought, and, and, and comments I'll make is, I've been on the board now for, I think, six or seven years. Every two or three years, we get one of these issues from a circle property, where the property has some weird curves or some weird things that frankly, our zoning code doesn't deal with very well. Our zoning code assumes that your property is a rectangle. And, um, and, and that challenges us on this one, but in the past, especially if there's no butter comments or butter complaints, or if there's no issues, we've, we've historically allowed these, partly in recognition of the fact that the plots for the town pre-1991 are screwy. So I'd offer that up as sort of some background for, for everyone, and this seems to be to fall exactly in that kind of, kind of the box. It's in the Pleasant Hill District, which has other weird circles and weird sort of sub-development lot sizes. I have no doubt that at some point in the next 10 years, it will come back to this committee or to, to our future colleagues with another one looking for a porch that has a three-foot, two-inch variance requirement, um, because of a weird corner on the lot. So, um, I just encourage us to think about that practically. And that's part of why we can give up to five feet of variance on, 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 on our, on the sides. So, any other thoughts?
Other than? I apologize, Mr. Chair. We apparently did not get the full set of plans in the board docs. This is what uh, the applicant was talking about as far as the elevation and how aesthetically it was balanced on both sides. And I wanted to try to bring that up, but we don't have it in, in there.
And, and, and that is the thing that we've dealt with in prior versions of this, which is, yes, you could cut off a portion of that corner of the thing, but you end up with a screwy-looking asymmetrical wraparound porch.
You never got the full set?
Apparently not. We, we got the paper copy. I don't think we got the digital copy.
Oh, nice. I have record of that. Yeah, okay, you never received it. I got you.
I'll dig around for the submittal while discussing.
Any other, if, do we have any other comments? Um, then, uh, number one, uh, the, we're going to go through this quickly, um, if you don't mind. Um, number one, the existing, uh, buildings or structure, uh, were erected prior to July 3 of 1991. Uh, do we agree with that? Show of hands? That's unanimous. The requested reduction is reasonably necessary to permit the owner or occupant to use and enjoy the property in essentially the same manner as other properties are utilized in the zoning district. Uh, again, a show of hands? We find this to be the case? Thank you. Due to the physical features of the lot, uh, and/or the location of existing structures, it would not be practical to construct the proposed expansion and enlargement or new structure in conformance with the currently applicable yard size requirements. I think we found this to be true. Show of hands, please? That's unanimous. The impacts, defects of the enlargement, expansion, or new building or structure on existing uses of the neighborhood will not be substantially different from or greater than the impacts and effects of a building or structure which conforms to the yard size requirement. I believe we found this to be true as well. Can I see a show of hands? That's curious. And the applicant has not commenced construction. We've validated that and, and we have that. Uh, could I have a motion, please? Thank you, David.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Richard. If, uh, Doreen, you would call the roll?
Michael Campbell?
Yes.
Peter Freylinger?
Yes.
Joe Doherty?
Yes.
Richard Silkman?
Yes.
And David Bork?
Yes.
The appeal is passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, I'm sorry, glad to bring a little levity to the night.
Enjoy the porch. Do? Um, now, get back to the agenda, which moved around 17 times.
I'm going to hear a few 2786.
We are now here for 2786. I apologize to the appellant here that I'm so disorganized, but, um, uh, practical difficulty variance by Samantha and Matthew Beaton, 31 Chamberlain Road. Uh, are you Samantha Beaton?
Yes, I am.
Terrific. Uh, you have the, and again, if you could take us through in broad strokes what you're looking for for variance, and then we'll go through the requirements for the, um, for the, uh, practical variance appeal and, uh, and go through them one by one.
Absolutely. Um, if you guys are interested in wonky shaped lots, please, uh, look at ours. I don't know what happened when they were kind of making these, but someone was a little slanted with their drawing. What my husband and I are seeking with our variance is for our four-bedroom, two-full-bath family home in Scarborough to have a two-car garage added on so that we can keep our family growing and add value to the property such as living in Maine. Having a garage is, as you know, an enormous plus to us. I grew up in Virginia, so having lived in Maine now for eight years, I am now loving the idea of having a garage added on to our home, and as our children are growing older, it would be fantastic to be able to have somewhere to put their bikes. So what we're looking for, the way that our lots are shaped, for some reason, with this strip, stretch of about six or seven, would not go over the property line. We would be extremely close to our abutting property, but it would go over the setbacks required. So the picture there shows what it would look like if we potentially took down the structure of our existing small deck on the side of the home, put a very narrow two-car garage in the front, and had it be a little bit deeper than a normal garage, so that we could then have that excess of storage and have a mudroom and other spaces for the home. And this is very similar to others within the neighborhood, both our street and the neighborhood directly, the street directly behind us, which those properties were constructed around a similar time.
Okay. Any general questions? If not, we will go through, um, public comment? Yeah, let's see, public comment. Um, is there? Terrific, we have public comment. Come on up, um, again, your name, your address, and, uh, and then, uh, you're it for the evening, so I'll give you as, as much time, but if you could, keep in mind, we're all volunteers.
I want to go home early, too.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Marjorie Rosenbaum, 29 Chamberlain Road. Talk about crazy shapes, huh? I'm glad it's still up there.
Who thought rhombuses were, were good property?
Insane. It's insane. Anyway.
It's 29 to the right or to the left, and that's all.
You see my house, uh, on the right-hand side?
Okay.
So the garage would be building into, would be going towards your property?
Yes. Uh, in fact, well, I don't know how to show you. Right there, this corner.
This one right here?
That's there. That's my yard.
Gotcha, that's your yard.
That's my yard.
Got it.
Okay. On this map. Oh, it's up here.
Yeah, it's up here, too, yeah.
Okay. On this map, is there any elevation shown?
No, we typically don't get elevation.
Oh, big mistake.
Elevations actually are not part of our zoning code.
Okay, well, then, uh, maybe you can tell me who I address.
Well, for, for that, I, I guess.
In another time. Let's just do this now.
And as we go through here, um, part of the, uh, the appeal, um, relates to, uh, I'm trying to find where it is. Adverse effect of the natural environment, which would include issues like drainage. And, uh, and that's, but that, that, that is one of the elements that we consider for practical variance appeal.
Okay.
So, um, but, but just.
I'll get started with my comment.
Just in general, the town has, does not consider elevation or elevation at any point in Arizona code. So just, it just isn't there. That would be a matter for the town council, so.
Okay. All right, first, you know, I have encouraged my neighbor's garage project. I, you know, in a different time, in a different place, I had four kids. I had at one time a, a oversized garage, at one time, a two-car garage. Never kept a car in a garage. There's too much stuff. Plus, we live in New England and we like winter sports, and, you know. Anyway, I've laughed about that. Anyway, um, so my, so I'll read you my, uh, statement. My driveway significantly slopes down from Chamberlain Road. Winter snow and in my front yard and from town road plowing freeze and melt and run down the driveway. I work at opening drainage access under the backyard snowbank piled up from plowing my driveway. When it rains on top of frozen ground in winter, water pools at the bottom of my driveway, freezing and melting until it slowly drains away. It has never backed up into my home or garage. The foundation of that building you see is eight inches high relative to the driveway. Garage is flush with the driveway. So that's my first question, and then how will plants be protected during and as a result of construction? Some were mature already when we moved here in 1999, others I planted soon afterwards. And I just want my neighbor's need for a garage to be compatible with my need to protect my home and yard. And I don't know when the time is to talk about the French drain. It's probably not now.
Well, actually, for you, for public comment, ye- yes, you should talk about, uh, now, because you, we don't have public comment during our findings of fact. So if you wish to bring up something about some of the facts that we may need to be informing ourselves of, now is the time.
Okay. A French drain should drain, should follow the land and slope down. It probably wouldn't do me any good to have the French drain above where the water collects in my yard.
And you said the water collects in your backyard? Did I get that correct?
In my, at the foot of my driveway.
Foot of your?
Sure, when the ground is frozen.
Question, I, I, I can't tell from this picture. Where, do we have a bigger schematic that shows?
There we go.
Yeah, so. I'd just like to get a sense where the yard, the driveway is.
Do you see where, if you zoom in to where that is, where it says um, proposed garage, that line right there?
Uh huh.
That's where her, her driveway goes all the way back to that.
So the driveways parallel each other?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mine is longer, right deep, goes further back. Mine, at the end of my house there. Oh, at the end of, at the end of my house there.
Yep.
The, the driveway kind of like is is a pie-shaped slice a little bit beyond that, but not much.
So your principal concern is, is drainage? Even, now it's drainage, but then it's how will that runoff and the drainage change into your driveway? And is your garage under the house?
Yeah.
It is, so it's, it's a.
Is an embankment, right?
Right, so, yeah, I used to live in a house like this. You kind of pull right in and, yeah.
I never used the garage.
Okay.
I park on the grass in
Sure.
in the front, because with a sloped driveway and it freezes.
Yeah.
First of all, I have to be out of the way of the guy who comes and plows. And second, if it, it starts freezing at about 2:00 in the afternoon, because that's about the end of the sun in the winter, and. in the winter. And um, so I have to have my car up on my front yard.
Okay. Any other questions? Good. That's been very helpful. Um, uh, obviously, we have some, we we have questions that will come out of that, but thank you very much. Anything else you'd like to add for the public record?
I hope I haven't left anything out.
We'll move along then. But thank you very much. We appreciate it. Appreciate your time. Thank you for participating. Um, any questions at this point for? Yes, Mr. Bork.
Yes, I have a question for the applicant regarding the proposed garage. Uh, you you are requesting a two car garage, is that correct?
Yes.
And that's why it comes within one point one foot of the of your property line?
Yes.
Why are you requesting a two car garage instead of one car garage?
We have two cars.
You couldn't park one of the the cars outside the garage?
We could potentially, but with the, we could potentially, but with the, we would have to expand the driveway as narrow as it is currently. We're only able to have one car at a time go through, so it's not wide enough to have.
What I'm suggesting is you do pavement on the, as you're facing the front of the house and the garage, okay? Pave on the right side of the proposed garage, but instead of a two car garage, a one car garage. So you could park a car there. The car in the garage would not have a problem getting in and out. The car that's on the side wouldn't have any problem getting in and out.
It it's a possibility.
Okay.
For sure, but this is.
Is it something you would consider?
We would consider it, yes.
Okay, but but you hadn't yet. I just want to establish.
We.
Why you're asking for.
Yes, we would like to pursue having a two car garage to be able to have the ability to either park both cars in the garage or utilize the second side for storage for our family. Um, if we had to downsize to make it um pass through the town, then we would definitely consider it.
You do have a shed, don't you?
In the back of the property, yes, we do.
Could have a second shed easily. You've you've got a large lot, right?
Uh, yes, an interesting lot.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, agreed. Okay. Uh, but I'm just trying to get some background as to why you want to bu- build a garage within one point one feet of the property line, which is extremely close to.
Yes, it that would not be our general desire had we had any say in the original plan of the home or the property structure. Um, it's just kind of the way the cookie is crumbling with the size of the way that the lot is shaped. For some reason, the builder on either side of us, on the right side, um, there is a one car garage built into the home. On the left side, there's a two car garage built into the home, but for some reason, the builder decided to put our home there and not add a garage onto a pretty sizable lot. So we don't want it to be that close, but if if we could, we would like to have something that large.
Definitely, you know, as a member of the board, I'm very concerned about that. Um, now, you you did consider putting the garage behind the home, but that's much more, that's a much more expensive alternative.
It would be, yes, a considerable undue hardship for our family. We've already, when we initially purchased the home, the deck did not pass inspection, so we had to take it down. Um, we invested the money to build a new deck, so that would include removing the existing deck, um, building up, as you can see from the picture, um, the elevation in which we would have to build, moving the current door from the kitchen would have to be relocated, potentially relocating the egress from the basement as well.
Right. We'll get into that later, okay? But I just want to, you go on record now of of all the things you've considered.
Yes.
in making this decision.
Yes.
Okay, good. Before we get into the nuts and bolts of this application.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think I'll go through the items of practical variance with the the appellant, and then we'll have our discussion. Any other questions for the appellant before I go into that though? Okay, great. Um, um, so again, you uh, I'll go through the items required for this, and then you'll read in your response. It's very it's it's not a particularly interesting part of the uh, the variance process, but it allows us to have your your comments on the recorded record, so.
Should I read directly what's submitted?
That'd be great.
Okay.
That's why this is really boring.
Okay.
Uh, number one, the need for a variance is due to the circumstances of the property and not to the general conditions of the neighborhood.
Um, yes. Appendix A shows the narrow and angular proportions of the lot. Due to the nature of the lot, a proposed garage would not be attainable within the current setbacks.
The grant, number two, the granting of a variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use or fair market value of abutting properties.
Appendix D reflects the potential um, one bay, two car garage, which would maintain the character of the neighborhood and bring it within more accordance to surrounding properties.
Number three, the practical difficulty is not the result of an action taken by the applicant or a prior owner.
Um, developer of current lot and surrounding lots did not include a garage similar to the adjacent properties. Position and width of current dwelling in reference to the angle of the lot varies from similar properties.
No other feasible alternative is available for the applicant except a variance.
Appendix she's, appendix C shows a potential alternative location of the garage within setbacks as well as the additional construction required. Quotes from Pro Matcher, Home Guide, Hancock Lumber and Lowe's estimate general construction of the garage and proposed location to be roughly twenty nine thousand one hundred twenty three dollars. Additional construction outlined in appendix C would be an estimated thirty percent increase on cost, bringing the total to thirty seven thousand eight hundred fifty nine dollars. This is not a feasible alternative available to the applicant as it is outside the saved amount for the addition and would create undue financial hardship.
The granting of a variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties.
Appendix she, appendix C, appendix B point one and appendix B point two outlines how the variance would bring the current property into conformance with surrounding properties.
The granting of a variance will not have an unreasonably adverse effect on the natural environment.
The proposed structure would be on the property currently without vegetation or natural surroundings. Drainage from the proposed structure would be required require preventative drainage system to protect the integrity of adjacent property foundation as well to protect from potential erosion, could include a dry well or retaining walls with French drain. Should the variance be granted, construction proposal would include outline for conservation of runoff water and not negatively impact the surrounding properties.
The property is not located in whole or in part within a shoreline area as defined by the Town of Scarborough Floodplain Management Ordinance.
No, it is not.
And we can look for a bet. Thank you. Please demonstrate how the strict application of the dimensional standards of the ordinance to the property for which a variance is sought would both preclude a use of the property that is permitted in the air zone where it is located and would also result in significant economic injury to the applicant.
Um, garage additions are permitted within this zone.
Okay. Any questions before we move into our discussion?
Can I make just one comment too? I was thinking, um, back to your question, sir, I can't quite read here. Um, asking why for a two bay garage versus a one or similar, um, I think I'm doing my job. I'm advocating for my family and I'm advocating for a two car. And if we do need to do something smaller, that's what we'll have to do, but I would like to strongly advocate for E two.
Good. I would just add, any addition is going to require a variance.
Yeah, so that's normally what we have when we have practical variance, but anything else?
One question.
Sure, sure.
And when you were describing the drainage issue, you said that the current plans include the retaining wall and the French drain and the conservation issues? Or are those not included in the current plan?
We don't have a current plan for the structure because we wanted to speak with the town first, but it would include a conservation plan should it move forward in construction. We could also include plans to where drainage wouldn't even go to the right side of the property. It would all go to the left and drain in a dry well or um an alternative would be also to have a more sustainable um way of collecting the rainwater for future use.
Vivian, misspoke. You have a cost estimate for the current garage?
Yes.
Did that cost estimate include all of these drainage considerations?
No, the construction only.
You know how much those would cost? And the reason I'm getting to that is that as you listed them off and in my head I was tabulating it. It might come to more than eight thousand dollars, which is the cost that you said you can't afford to put the garage in the back. And so if we if we grant the variance in the expectation that all of these measures will be taken, the stormwater runoff, the French drain, the retaining wall, we have no guarantee that those are going to occur and and we need to somehow we need to find that there's no adverse impact on your neighbor.
Sure, of course. And I wasn't suggesting that all of them would be necessary. It could be a combination. It could be one. It could be as simple as ensuring that the drainage spouts went to the other side of the driveway or our property and wouldn't have an output on that side of the property at all.
Mr. Chair, I, yes, could I just add to that? That may be true. However, if they went to the op, the other alternative that was shown on the plan, there would be equal amount of drainage issues with that because they'd have to build the property up so much. There would be runoff with that too. So both cost estimates would expand with that that thing. So I, what I'm trying to say is, yes, it may cost eight thousand dollars more where they are. It's going to cost another eight thousand for the alternative. So it's sort of equal. There's a lot of earthwork that would have to happen for that alternative.
Get around.
And I'm just pointing that out as you're doing that consideration. Keep that in mind that there's going to be added cost to that too.
Mr. Chair.
I I, uh, actually, I had raised my hand waiting to try to get, but I I I usually don't have a question, but I do actually have one on this one, so. If you don't, do you mind if I?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I guess one foot, one inch of um, of setback. Is there even a room to have any feasible drainage management um construct? Given that limited um distance to the to the to the property line?
So I would imagine that my alternative would be to have all of the drainage go to the left side of where the proposed garage would be. So we would have the drainage system closer to our property and not have any um spouts releasing on the right side.
Well, there are spouts, but the 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 placement of of a structure alters the 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 terrain around it. So it's not just where the the roof runoff is coming to. It's it's about how to redirect now ground runoff as it as it flows around and across the property.
Absolutely. There is already a significant dip in the elevation between our property and the abutting driveway. So there there's already a large shift. It wouldn't be adding.
Coming into your property?
From our property to the adjacent property.
Runs down?
Yes, already.
Yeah, that that and but it's re- already without a structure. With a structure, you've now created hardscape and there's water running around that structure um, onto presumably your neighbor's property unless you construct a drain. And again, a one foot, one inch setback is an awfully tiny space on which to to build a drain. So and I'm asking this because I feel like we're asking a question of this a feasibility question here that needs to be answered before we could really rule on this variance.
Sure.
So if we were to approve this, we are approving it with the assumption that one foot, one inch is enough to manage that drainage issue. And I gotta be honest with you, it doesn't feel that way.
Well, it's only one foot, one inch in one spot, right? There's more room in the back where the where it would slope off.
Well, but if you think about it.
Still, it's still narrow, at least at the back, in one piece.
Exactly. And and if the, and if we've heard testimony that it's rolling down this way.
Or or I I thought it was rolling down perpendicular to the
Well.
house. Yeah, that, in that direction.
Yeah, but that's my point. There's water coming around here that has no cutoff point there.
Yeah.
You're effectively, there there's not space for a drain.
And how do you construct?
So.
You're digging into that.
If if you left that, you effectively built a dam there. Where you're going to have water rolling out this way and out this way because it can't flow through a natural channel there.
That's the way it's always done it.
No, there's no building there right now.
No, but but whatever was there was all.
There is, there's nothing there.
But all we're putting on that is is a roof.
No, we're not putting a building.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, but okay, so you've you've you've.
But you.
Yeah.
No, 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 no. I mean, I my understanding is that, and I could be completely wrong, is that there's nothing there now, but the slope of the land is downhill perpendicular to the house, that direction.
Yep.
So any water that would currently fall in front of the new garage is already going to run off in that direction.
No, you've got a flat driveway here.
No, no, in front of the, any water that runs in front of falls in front of the garage is going to run to the right. And the garage isn't going to change that.
Unless the driveway is sloped.
The driveway is sloped, not as severely as our abutting neighbors, but it is sloped. Um, as I, I don't know the exact angle, but it's enough for my kids to ride their bikes down. Um, but it is already sloped.
In that case, you're right. It would cause a problem. Okay, I'm going to go back to my suggestion of consideration for a one car garage because then it allows for vegetation to be in between the garage and the property line, which would help significantly in controlling water runoff. And yes, I realize that's a, it could be a perceived as a hardship that you can only park one car in the garage. But a lot of people in Maine don't have any garages, so one's better than none. And as I suggested, you know, you could park the car on the side, maybe gravel instead of asphalt because that's not impervious. Uh, whereas asphalt is. So I mean, there, I think there's ways of dealing with this uh differently so that we won't have this problem. What you're asking for looks like it's going to create some problems for yourself as well as neighbors. And uh, yeah, I'm very concerned about that. So if if you're willing to accept, you know, that third alternative of a one car garage uh as a possibility, then I think this makes make more sense to me at least and perhaps other members of the board.
It seems to me we're trying to problem solve a bunch of engineering stuff here, and I don't feel comfortable with it. Anybody else have an engineering degree? Maybe?
No.
No? But not, yeah, not enough, yeah. And and so that being the case, and and certainly we've asked a lot of questions. Have you done your best to answer them, but yeah, I I I, my suggestion, if it's acceptable, is that if the appellant has an opportunity to go back and meet with a builder, obviously, there's some questions around especially soil erosion and environmental and water management. And and I think giving yourself the opportunity to do a little more homework, um, you may end up with Mr. Bork's proposal that, you know, the best we can do is a one car garage. But you may come back and say, hey, I've got answers to all of your questions, and it's going to make my neighbor happy as well, and I get that two car garage I want. So I, that that that's sort of the way I stand on this.
To add to that, and then I'm going to, Michael, do you have anything? I don't think we have a motion yet, fortunately, because I didn't, I want to ask you a question. Um, the other thing I I would add to that is I think we have an incomplete cost estimate right now. Um, and and that the cost of of engineering the drainage required around that one foot, one inch left piece of land that you have left may vastly exceed um the other cost options that you would have on the table for other design choices. Um, and I and and I say that partially for our um overview, but I'd like to give you the opportunity to potentially um withdraw the. um withdraw the application now and come back with at a future date. I think you're going to come back and I, we wish you luck on finding a garage. But I think we don't have the information here that would allow, enable us to 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 approve the areas. So I'll give you the that opportunity now, if you'd like to withdraw and come back.
So would that be different than tabling? Would I have to resubmit completely or what what would that look?
Tabling, our our objective on tabling is to have you come back as quickly as possible. So within ideally the next meeting, sometimes we go for two meetings out. Um if you think you can come back in thirty days with a substantial set of questions, sixty days. Having gone through this in different ways, I'd 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 say if you if you table it now and can't come back in two months, it'll be the same outcome as um withdrawing and just resubmitting whenever you're ready. So um but if you'd like to table for two months, we'll allow you to table, we we can, we could do, we could take a a motion on that one too.
I would like to table.
Do you have a mo- a motion?
I'll move that we table this for sixty days to our meeting in November.
Do I have a second? So move, do we uh call the roll?
You're filing up? To ordering?
Yes.
Which is Goodman?
Yes.
Mike Campbell?
There we go, okay, um the motion is tabled to our November regularly scheduled. And I believe that's it. Um any comments from staff or from members of the board? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We, Michael second, all in favor? We have approved, the meeting is adjourned.